Good evening and welcome to the 1,146th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, makes the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Right here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Karen Magnos here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here. And also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our planning departments. We do have a lot of folks in the audience, so I do want to let you know that with each of these petitions, we are going to start by getting background information on the petition. We'll have an opportunity for the petitioner to come forward and speak to us and answer questions. And then we will have an opportunity for folks in the audience who wish to speak for or against the item to also come forward and speak. So you will have an opportunity. And we do ask, because there are a lot of people here, that you try to be ready when your opportunity is, when it's your turn to come forward. So we'll make sure to let you know that and we'll get you to line up at the podiums. So with that, if the Secretary is ready, please begin with item number one on our public hearing section of our agenda.
Petition 2019 day 06-02-10 submitted by Home for Mom and Dad Assisted Living LLC. Requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 5.03-F of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended. In connection with a proposal to operate a senior assisted living facility for 16 persons at a rural urban farm zone district at 14860 Bainbridge Avenue, located on the east side of Bainbridge between Linden and Five Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 23.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a request to operate an adult foster care facility for 16 persons. This property is on the east side of Bainbridge, which is between Linden and Five Mile. As indicated, the zoning of the property is RUF Rural Urban Farm. The property itself measures roughly 1.42 acres. It has 99 feet of frontage on Bainbridge and a parcel depth of roughly 622 feet. There is an existing residential structure on the property. Presently, Home for Mom and Dad operates a licensed adult foster care facility for up to six persons, which, under state law and the city zoning ordinance, is treated as a permitted use. According to the State of Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, Home for Mom and Dad is currently licensed as a small group facility and is approved to serve the aged, which includes patients with Alzheimer's. Home for Mom and Dad is proposing to enlarge the house in order to increase the living capacity for up to 16 residents, which is the maximum allowed under Section 5.03-F of the city zoning ordinance, subject to waiver use approval. Pursuant to LARA's licensing rules, this increase would reclassify the facility as a large group home with a capacity of between 13 to 20 persons. Subsection F.1 stipulates that the use shall be located on a parcel of no less than one-half acre. The site, as I previously indicated, is 1.42 acres in size. The site is surrounded by residential homes that are also zoned RUF. The existing house on the property is one-story in height and about 2,947 square feet in size. The expansion would include a 1,122-square-foot addition, one stories to the rear of the house. Once completed, this would increase the size of the overall house to 4,069 square feet. The expanded structure would contain a total of 10 bedrooms, and this includes converting the existing attached two-car garage located in the front of the house into living space that would contain two of the 10 bedrooms. Section, or subsection J.3 requires that no more than two occupants be in each bedroom. The interior living space does include a living room, five bathrooms, a kitchen, dining area, and a laundry room. The requirements are for the house to be set back at least 50 feet from the right-of-way of Bainbridge. In this case, it's set back 151 feet. The side yards must be at least 10 feet. In the case of the north side, it's 10 feet 8 inches, and on the south side, 22 feet 7 inches. The required rear yard setback is 50 feet, and in this case, it's over 410 feet. So the existing house plus the addition does conform to all the required setbacks, as well as the other height, bulk, and area standards of the RUF District. Parking for the use is required based on a ratio of one space for each bedroom. So in this case, the ten-bedroom facility would require 10 parking spaces. The site plan shows the expansion of the parking area that is currently in front of the house, and that goes from five to 10 parking spaces. These would be lined up along the south side of the property extending from the corner of the garage westerly for a distance of approximately 103 feet. Access would be achieved via a single widened driveway on Bainbridge Avenue. The existing house is finished with brick and hardy plank siding, as well as a shingled peaked roof. The addition would contain many of the same materials, so it would blend in with the existing structure in terms of the architectural materials. There's a requirement under subsection F.4 that the lot be completely fenced in in the rear yard. Also, subsection F.6 stipulates that an outdoor recreation space be provided equal to at least 500 square feet per bedroom. The plan presented to the Commission does show that both of these requirements would be met. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First item is dated June 26. It's from the Engineering Division, and it reads, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The existing parcel is assigned the address of 14860 Bainbridge Avenue. The existing building is currently serviced by public sanitary storm and water main. The information submitted does not indicate any new connections to the existing utility services, so it appears that there will not be any additional impacts to the existing systems at this time. Should alterations to the existing services be required, the owner will need to provide plans to this department to determine if permits will be required. The submitted drawings indicate that a large addition is to be constructed on the rear of the existing structure. We would like to request that the owner submit a grading plan for the proposed addition, including the existing structure, to show that there will be no additional storm water runoff directed to the abutting properties." Now, letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter from the Fire Marshal that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, any expansion of this location must be specifically permitted by the State of Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, as well as the State Bureau of Fire Services. Two, any work must have the proper permits and plans submitted to the State Bureau of Fire Services for review and code acceptance. Three, all work, if permitted, must meet provisions of the current fire code as recognized by the State of Michigan. Four, the Livonia Fire Department Fire Inspection Division has concerns that the use of the facility and the type of patients housed there may inhibit a safe means of self-evacuation in a fire event. Five, it would be suggested that this division, by this division, that any proposed expansion be first approved by the State of Michigan prior to seeking any local building permits." And that letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police Traffic Bureau. That's signed by Brian Lee and dated July 8. Next, a letter from the Inspection Department dated July 17 that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. The proposed renovations to this structure shall meet all required current codes. Complete plans shall be submitted for review and permitting with the Inspection Department if this project moves forward. This department has no further objections to this petition." Now, letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance as there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general, or water and sewer. Now, letter is signed by Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant, and dated June 26. And lastly, we have a letter from the Office of Treasure dated July 1 indicating no objections at this time as our taxes due, but they are not delinquent. And that letter is signed by Linda Sheal, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And that is the extent of the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Are there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any. It's the petitioner here.
Sir?
Sir, yes.
I'm the owner of the Home for Mom and Dad. I refer...
Yes, yes. Please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Can we ask for your name and address for our record?
Yeah, my name is Benedicto Arsenal. That's my full name. The address where the assisted living is located is 14860 Bainbridge Street in Livonia.
Okay, Mr. Arsenal, and you are the owner of the...
I'm the owner and administrator. My training, my expertise is in that line of field. And should I proceed and explain to you why I picked that area?
Sure, please.
Yeah. See, I've been a psychiatric nurse for over 30 years. I've served the populace. The first 15 years, I managed hospitals, psychiatric hospitals. In the last 15 years, I focused my service to the elderly. One of the reasons is my mom, this is how we got started, she has Lewy Body dementia. She's been to three different places where we see the lack of care. You know, all these big facilities, they cost you from $8,000 to $12,000 a month. They don't provide any care because the state regulation requires one to 12, one staff to 12 patients. In my facility, we provide one to three during awake hours. So, and I don't charge $8,000 to $12,000 a month. I hardly make any money through what I'm doing, but this is my passion. These elderly, these elderly people, they are the last days of their lives with dementia. They're between the moderate and late states. They need care. They need to be in a place, not like an institution where they're so afraid. And when they need help to go to the bathroom, nobody comes. I go to these facilities and help them with this, but because of the state regulations, the requirement, they can get away with it. And I hate to see that. So, the thing about it, I think in my neighborhood, they don't understand when someone screams and yells. These people have dementia. When they scream and yell like that, sometimes they do that when they're giving a bat. They don't know what's going on. And to grudge us to be there and who are providing service to the communities, to these older people, I just can't understand it. Everyone of us are going to get older one day. Actually, this type of home needs to be encouraged because these big facilities, they don't serve them. They don't provide care to these people. And to deny the elderly to have a peaceful environment like a home, it's, they're not doing it... You know, even the mentally ill people deserve to be cared, but these are elderly people with dementia, with health problems. So, I don't get it.
All right, Mr. Arsenal, is there anything else that you'd like to tell us about your desire to expand your property?
Yes, I would like to expand it because right now, the pressing house, when we bought it because my mom has dementia, we are in a hurry to buy it. So, the living room, how it's situated, there's no windows there. It's dark. They just have, you know, two small windows. What I'd like to is to improve it for them. To have the living room, a big living room in the back, two more bedrooms in the back, and then convert the other places. Because the only reason we need more is I cannot afford to put a sprinkles system. It's $25,000 to $30,000. For me to improve the facility and for the care of these patients, I need to have a little bit bigger facility and a little bit more money. If you look at my, my wife and I make a lot of money. We don't need this money. My wife's an engineer. She's, you know, we don't need this. It's just that this is our passion. I can tell you a story why it's our passion, but, you know, actually, I invited three of my family members to speak for the type of care we provide, but I don't know if they're here now or not. So, any other question that I can answer?
Well, we will certainly have an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak. And if they're here, hopefully, they'll come forward and speak.
Yes.
Before we do that, though, we'll see if there's any questions for you from the Commission. Is there any questions for Mr. Arsenal? Mrs. Smiley?
Yeah, this, because of the size of this project, I'm not sure that you're in the right community. You're in a neighborhood... Thank you.
Folks, you're going to hear a lot of things that you're going to probably appreciate or not appreciate. So we'll try to, you know, keep things expedient, but I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing, first of all. And I realize that there's a need for it, and I had elderly parents and in-laws, so I understand what you're saying. But I'm not comfortable with your location. It's just too many people in a neighborhood.
They basically stays inside and hardly go out because they're mostly like, they need care, and they're on a wheelchair bound majority of them.
Okay.
And so, you know, I mean, in terms of traffic, we hardly have, you know. Every now and then, when all the, excuse me, clinician comes by, you know, we have doctors with PT, OT, I mean, you name it. Dentists, everybody that comes to the house to provide care for my patients. Every now, but they don't, they don't come all at the same time.
Okay, but it's more like a skilled nurse or like you say...
It's not a skilled.
It's not skilled.
It's not a nursing home. It's like a home.
Okay, except it's more like a business than an actual home where you have your parents with you.
Well, my mom passed away already, so she's not there anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry for your loss. But I understand what you're saying, but I'm just questioning your environment for this particular business.
Actually, this is the most soothing environment because it's like a home. If you put the patients in, that's why they don't drive and they don't do too well because it almost looks like an institution. The whole idea here is to put them in, you know, in a place that's just like home, where they have a backyard, they can see the animals running around. It's very therapeutic for them. Most of these patients, they have a lot of anxiety sometimes. Our job is to keep them calm and to provide support throughout the...
And I don't doubt that. I'm just telling you that it's more like Marywood or it's more like when we had somebody going to hospice. I've been to a couple of different hospice homes, but they're actually businesses that are, which require, because you are required, you know, for size and stuff. And they weren't in the middle of a neighborhood.
Yeah, you know, this is all throughout the whole Michigan. I'm not the only one who has this small group homes. And some of them are even inside, you know, like a subdivision, you know. So this is not something new that I'm just starting to create. It's all throughout. It's just that most people don't, are not aware of it. The state is aware of it, though. The state is very supportive in what we're doing. And basically, as far as I'm concerned, we meet all the criterias that the city... Because I met with Scott. We discussed the issues. You know, he checks all the zoning requirements and all that. It's just, I shouldn't have any problems with it. I don't just, I just didn't went ahead and did it. I consulted certain people here in, you know, in the facility. So when they said to me, yeah, you should be okay, and then I went ahead. And, you know, it's not cheap to...
No, to go through the process. I understand that.
To go through the process, you know.
And I appreciate that. I'm just telling you, as one Commissioner, that I don't feel this belongs in the middle of that neighborhood.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh.
Just in a follow-up from her statement, I agree with what she's saying. I also will say that I appreciate what you're doing. Have you looked at other locations? Have you attempted to find anyplace else that you could take your home?
Yeah, I can. It's just the whole idea that I would like to achieve for them is to be in a place that's just like home, not like an institution or not like a commercial building. There's a therapeutic sense to it by putting them in a place where they can see animals. They can see, you know, like a backyard. This is a very reason for this to be there. Because I can go somewhere else and have a commercial building. I mean, I'm not able to achieve those type of settings for them by just going into all the commercial places. They become like an institution. Any place that you see there, I hope you guys can visit some of those. I'm telling you, it's, that's what I do for a living. I go to those places and assess all those patients and make my recommendations to families, to providers. And I'm telling you, it's a scary thing. I mean, you should read all the statistics that they, you know, about two months ago in Yahoo News about there's going to be shortage of this and the lack of quality, you know, in this business. We're all getting older, and one day, you want to be able to go to a place. I mean, for myself, for my wife.
I don't think anybody would deny the need.
I mean, obviously, there are people who are denying that.
Well, no, no, no. I don't think anybody would say that we don't deny, that they're denying the need for facilities such as yours. I think it's more of a location situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero.
My dad had Alzheimer's, so I'm sensitive to it also. And right now, like when I visited the site, the house blends pretty much, you know. You can kind of, it looks like it fits pretty decent.
Yeah.
But I'm reading here, there were 34 fire and rescue runs over a four-year period with six patients.
Yeah.
I have to believe you increased that by almost three times. Those runs are going to increase significantly, so...
They say 16, but because that's what's the rules that you guys had established that. But it doesn't have to be 16, is what I'm saying.
Okay, just hear me out.
Yeah.
So, if you've got that, let's just say, whatever the number is, it's going to increase. That number's probably going to increase, too. And I don't know what those runs were, you know. I'm sure there was issues and...
Yeah.
So, being sensitive to homeowners and neighbors, in the middle of the night, you got fire and rescue trucks zipping up and down the street. It just, I agree with the fellow Commissioners here, it just doesn't seem like a fit. And now you're going to have this 40-foot-wide driveway with 10 parking spaces and a handicap spot. It looks commercial. It just doesn't look right in the middle of a sub. And you need to look at it from their side as well. I mean, and I believe in your care, believe me. Don't take it the wrong way. I totally think it's a great thing. It's just the setting seems like it belongs maybe up on Five Mile or somewhere where there's similar facilities. That's my feeling, too. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Bonjero.
Chairman, Mr. Arsenal, what is the current age of the folks in your home?
Right now, it's averaging 89 to 98.
So the youngest person is 89?
Yes.
Okay. And the oldest is 98?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever had any of your neighbors, people who live in the surrounding homes, come to you and complain about your residence?
Well, I received one phone call one day and says like, oh, we heard some screaming, and it's true, but because the hospice aide was giving bat to someone who's bed bound and who has severe dementia. That I heard that in the complaint. And last Friday, we heard a complaint from, according to the state, from the locals, saying that we're operating a home without a license. So, all little things that if someone like a garbage, I think I heard it from my staff, that they were told that sometimes, you know, they have garbage and the garbage collector comes. When they pick up the garbage, they throw the garbage, and if a gloves fell out somewhere there, that it becomes all of a sudden... Okay, I mean, so, those are an easy fix. If a staff is notified, they can easily go out there and pick it up. I mean, those are not the major problem. I think the issue here is just they don't want us in the neighborhood. That's, you know...
Well, my next question is, have you gone back to the folks that have complained with a solution to the problem?
I tried calling, but they never called me back.
You're never there.
Please don't.
I called you. I gave you my number.
You'll have a chance.
You'll have your chance.
And the thing about it is, I don't know if this is the right time to complain about it since they have, they run a business on that side. They're the ones who's taking care of my lawn. Okay? They have tractors, everything in there lined up on their drive. There are days when they have like 10 of them there lined up. We're more quiet than they are. So, it's just that we're new in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arsenal.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you use the normal garbage pickup that the city provides?
Yes.
And how much, like how many bags or cans of trash do you have in a normal week?
Sometimes they bring somewhere from four to five cans, those black cans that they put garbage.
And that's with six people?
Yeah, that's with six people.
In there now. So again, if we're looking at increasing that, we're looking at doubling or tripling the amount of waste each week?
Yeah, we probably have to look at, you know, a better service if we have to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
Sir, how long you been in business down there?
Three and a half years.
Three and a half with the six people?
Yes.
Okay, how about before that? Were you in business before that as well?
No, it's just I got started with this when my mom got sick with Lewy Body dementia. And she was on different facilities where she'd never get cared.
And how many other properties have you looked at, I guess, in Livonia, around Livonia, to kind of find your need?
Before I found this one?
Before you found it and now, since you're trying to expand, what else have you looked at?
I've looked at some other places in Livonia, in Oakland. I live in, you know, I live in Oakland. So, it's just that we're here already. It's a nice, I thought it's a nice setting because I have a big, you know, big land where it's a comfortable place, you know.
When you say you've looked at other places, like where? I mean, it's very vague.
There's one right now, and it's a building by itself, but it's by the middle mill. There's, it used to be physical therapy, but I haven't been inside. I'm just kind of like canvassing exactly in terms of where is a better place, you know. But it's just walls there. That's why it doesn't fit the design of how I envision how an older people should be able to have peace in their lives before, you know. They are the last days of their lives, you know.
Yeah, you made that pretty clear today. I got to say that, like some of the others here, I don't deny what you're doing is good work, but in the neighborhood, I don't think it's the right spot. But that's my opinion for now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magnos. Any other questions or comments for our petitioner? Seeing none. Sir, we will have you sit down for just a moment. We have several people in the audience who I'm sure want to speak, and then we'll get you back up here at the end.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenal. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against this item, please come forward. I see some folks coming forward. Feel free to line up at the podium so we can keep things moving.
Let us sign in here.
Either one.
And, sir, you don't need to sign in. Just give us your name and address, and we will credit you.
My name is William Peterson. I live on Bainbridge Street 14585 Bainbridge. I am opposed to this waiver. Now, having said that, I admire the gentleman's commitment to caring for the elderly. They absolutely need that care. My mother is in an assisted living facility. She could not survive without that. However, having said that, my wife and I moved our family to this city and to this particular neighborhood 19 years ago because it is just that, a neighborhood. The residents who live here mostly know each other. We look out for each other. We help each other as the needs arise. Between Linden and Five Mile, this is a neighborhood of single-family residences. Most are owner-occupied. We care about each other and what goes on in the neighborhood. A change of the type proposed here would indelibly alter the neighborhood and not for the better, I believe. This proposed facility would be of a completely different nature than the rest of the neighborhood. To my knowledge, the owner of this facility has not made an effort to make himself known to the residences, to the residents of the neighborhood or to interact with us at all. That's not a good neighbor policy. It's not a good neighborhood policy. More specifically, the owner has been operating a six-bed facility. There have been complaints about garbage, about trash. They get put out in bags by the street, and the animals, and there are lots of animals in the neighborhood, they get at 'em, and then we have, um, used medical supplies. I've heard of, uh, sharps, needles, uh, rubber gloves, that sort of thing. That's not needed in our neighborhood. The large structure that he proposes would, would change the appearance of the neighborhood, especially for those who live next door or a house or two removed. And I don't think that would be supported. You will likely hear from some of them. With traffic flow, there'd be increased traffic flow. That obviously is not welcome in a small neighborhood like that. I believe there are other places in the city that would be more appropriate, um, be a much better fit for this kind of an operation. In this neighborhood, we have ditches and mailboxes. We don't have curbs and sidewalks, and frankly, we like it that way. If any of his, his residents happen to get out of the building, were able to walk up someplace, there's no place for them to safely move. I'll reiterate, I am opposed to this. My wife is opposed to it, and, uh, for those reasons, I ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Sir?
Hi, I'm Jim Parks. Uh, my mother is a resident at the facility. Uh, she has lived in Livonia for almost forty years. She has been at three of the other facilities that Ben had talked about. One of the things that I'd like you to be aware of, when you do sign your parent up for one of those facilities, it, they do make you sign off a waiver that says that they are allowed to sedate your parent. That's why when you walk through the facility, you see numerous people in wheelchairs staring at the walls. My mother's been through three of them, two, one in Ann Arbor and two in Livonia, as you were talking about. We got her into a group home setting. To answer your question about it being in the right setting and so forth, everyone that we had looked at for the group homes are in neighborhoods. So, they blend in, you don't really notice them. To the gentleman's discussion about the, uh, fear of them getting out, they are in a secured and locked system. The, you know, you can't just walk in, they cannot just walk out. There's multiple, uh, things in order to allow them out. I understand the many people here that have areas of that issue. My wife and I have, uh, had our parents, both her parents and my parents, living with us for nine years before we finally got to the point where we could not take care of my mother anymore. So, my mother is ninety-three years of age. To your, uh, the gentleman's statement about the businesses has been stated, there are other businesses on there, so the house blends in. If you didn't know it, you drive by it all day long, you'd never notice it. House size-wise, there's very, there's several large houses over there, so again, it's just an expansion of a home. It's not something that has a big sign out front that says that. Like I said, we'd been through several group homes where, again, they're all in neighborhoods, you never notice the difference of them, they, it's nothing that calls out. Traffic-wise, in my neighborhood, I, I happen to live in Canton, I see there's elderly people in my neighborhood, I see traffic come through, there's one that's down the street from me that has multiple people that have, uh, you know, emergency care that's taking care of them. I have a gentleman that lives right next to me that we kinda always watch out for as well. He's had five or six issues so far just this year. That's, happens. Any type of neighborhood, you're going to have people that are gonna be coming in and out in emergency situations. So, I, I understand all of their points. As I said, my parent was in one of those facility, or two, three of those facilities for a while. We could not, in good conscience, keep them there. Since my mother has been at Ben's facility, her medicine intake has changed dramatically. My mother was on a downward slide. Uh, we really thought that she was not gonna last out more than probably eighteen months. In the time she's been there, a marked difference. The doctors that care for them, we have, uh, a doctor that actually travels, funny enough, but, um, she has visited the house when my pa, uh, when my mother lived with us, and so she has seen all the differences. And she said, "This has been the best thing." And she is, since she's been there, she has seen other patients that have been at Ben's facility, and she's just utterly stunned on the change and the care that they're getting. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. I understand that there's a lot of issues, that people have the perceptions, it's been running there for years, and I understand there has been some complaints on that. Those are minor things that can be resolved. I'm in a quality position. Anything can be fixed. You just put, implement corrective actions and so forth. But I, I'm just, i-if we lost this place for my mother, I'm not sure what me and my siblings would do. Because the care that she's taken there, including the care that she had when she was living in my own home for several years, this is so much better because they're professionals and they know how to take care of the elderly, so...
Mr. Parks, we have a question for you.
Yes, I... You don't think, don't see it changing when they triple the size of it?
Uh, with the care, wh-when you say changes, explain to me.
It's going from a, a home, six people, that could be a family. You know what I'm saying? But I'm saying when it goes from six to sixteen, that's almost triple the size, sixteen to twenty, you don't see the environment or it changing dramatically. You have a big driveway going down with parking spot, it's, it's not gonna be the same thing.
You're adding in five parking spots? If you have, if you've seen the facility, there's five more parking spots in there. So, not visually, I got a guy across the street with me, he's got a four, uh, driveway that's four long, it almost covers the whole front of his yard. There's not a whole lot of variation that you're gonna see in that. It looks like a home. Uh, like I said, next door is a business itself that has trucks, you know, multiple trucks and the equipment there. The visual acuity on it's not that different.
I'm just seeing it different than from being at home.
And I understand that, internally...
To triple the size of it, yeah.
Well, again, most of it, it's off the back. It's, you're, you're not gonna see it from the street side. It's not something. So, the only difference that you're gonna see is a few extra parking spots that are coming up from the front.
I appreciate your opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, I want to, uh, thank you for your comments, and I'm glad to hear that your mom is getting good care there. It's very good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
How you doing? My name's Scott Solmson, uh, one-four-five-five-eight Bainbridge. Um, I live down the street from this house, um, and I applaud the gentleman because it's, it's, it's a nice house, it's well taken care of, he appears to be giving very good care to the people there, um, and I appreciate that because I've been to several facilities, older retirement homes where they are deplorable. So, it's, it's a great, it's a, it's a great thing that he's doing, and I, that's fine. Uh, however, living on the street, when I go down and it is trash day and there's a ton of trash out there, uh, I worry about tripling the size of that. Now, all my neighbors have to look at a long driveway that is now expanded into a parking lot. So, now they're looking at several cars going down. We have, we don't, we have regular roads, it's two lanes wide, that's it, there's no room for error. So, more and more traffic down our street, which is already high enough as is, um, if you don't know it, it's right next to Merriman, people fired on it all day. And more traffic, that just means more traffic, that means more, uh, the fire department, and that's a concern for me as well as, if you're, you're going all the way back there and now you're putting another addition on the back of this, and so they have to go even further away from wherever they're hooking up and however, however many people out. That concerns me. But for me, it's more of, um, yes, there are people that own businesses on this street, I am one of them. Everybody who has been here knows that I had a whole bunch of FedEx trucks. At some point in my driveway, I had a FedEx truck fixing it, doing something with it, um, but I also took care of it and, you know, got it out of there as soon as possible. That's the point, but the point is, is that I had a business there, it's why, I understand. However, I just don't see that tripling the size capacity of this is gonna be a good idea because it's not gonna be, it won't be garbage cans anymore, it'll be a dumpster. And now, now I drive down my street where I look at a whole bunch of nice smaller homes, and I see, you know, like you said, it go, the parking, the driveway's about a hundred and something feet, and it's about twenty feet wide. Now, that's gonna have to be expanded for all those parking lots. And now I'm looking at a parking lot, and I guarantee you that I'll be looking at a parking lot and a dumpster. And when you do all that and you have to lay down all that, all, all that asphalt, it's gotta go somewhere. Uh, so I fear for my, the neighbors immediately to the north and south of them if that does happen for flooding because it will happen around there at some point. Besides that, uh, like I said, I just, more traffic is something I don't need, and, you know, obviously, everybody else will tell you what they think too, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. We'll start, we'll go to you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Federanco. I live at one-four-eight-eight-zero Bainbridge, directly north of the property. It takes a special person to be a hospice nurse. We're not knocking that. It's a wrong location. His corner of the house, on the northeast corner of his house, is nine-point-two inches away from my property line, not eight-point, not ten-point-eight that's stated on this piece of paper. Okay? I'm definitely concerned about the shadow of rainwater going on my property. Our backyards are flooded already, we don't need any extra water. We do have issues with employees coming in and out, living right next door, in and out twenty-four hours a day, car alarms going off, people getting dropped off with the large, with radios, loud radios going down the street, uh, car doors slamming, alarm goes "dip-dip." They turn on, they turn on the light for the walkway, the pathway to get in, first thing they do at two o'clock in the morning, knock on the door. What does my dog do? Gets up and barks, wakes the whole family up, doing its natural job. That's not, that's not good for a neighborhood. I'm gonna be looking at fifty, fifty-six feet of wall on one side of my house. That's larger than the front of this house. It's, it's, it's gonna be blended in with brick and veneer, it's just not a good fitting. It's not a good fitting for the neighborhood. I disagree with the whole thing. I don't think it should be in our neighborhood. It should be on Five Mile, it should be wherever on a commercial street for this type of application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm the owner of fourteen-eight-two-zero Bainbridge, which is directly south, so I'd be the one to guess to look at the parking lot.
Okay, can we get your name?
Yeah, Thomas Shuttleworth, sorry.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyhow, a-as you guys stated and other things, um, but the, the man talking about him being thrown out, that no one said about what they have there, the expansion is the issue, and then I think everyone's on the same page with that, and I don't think I really have to go on and on about issues. Ben is a very nice guy. I, I don't, can't say anything bad about the guy. He's been very pleasant, but however, when you're going to this size, it needs to be moved to where it needs to be moved, or get a different home somewhere else. I mean, I, I mean, get, why can't he have another house? He's gonna get bigger staff. I mean, so, so my concerns are, is now you're gonna let commercial, it's a residence, we go home to rest, this is what we wanna do, not look at a big building per se, and that's how we'll all look at it. And then, I mean, especially when you had a parking lot, and you start talking dumpsters, I mean, I'm all out on dumpsters. I mean, that'll be for me to look at, and that'll be wonderful. So, we're definitely not for it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gail Federanco. I live at fourteen-eight-eight-zero Bainbridge. I am the house directly next door to the north, and I wanted to share a few examples with you that probably is not in the paperwork that you have to look through tonight. I really wanted to share the human aspect of living next door to this commercial business. While Ben is a very nice person, and I applaud his efforts, and no one in the neighborhood has had a problem with the current level that he's been servicing of six people, I agree with Tom and my neighbors, it is the fact, the expansion just does not fit into our neighborhood. So, what I'd like to do is share some examples of things that I've personally witnessed over the three and a half years that he's been my neighbor. Now, granted, some of them haven't happened yesterday or the day before, it's happened maybe a year or so ago, but it are, they are still, uh, instances in which my family was subjected to things that you wouldn't really expect to find in a residential area. So, I'd like to read a letter that I have composed so that I don't get too far off track and take up too much of your time.
Feel free.
So, um, "The business since its inception at its present location has in fact changed the neighborhood dynamics. One notable observation is the disruption of the peace and tranquility that originally attracted my family and I to the neighborhood twenty-one years ago. It has become increasingly difficult to sit on our back deck and enjoy the quietness of the landscape when you often hear the distressing screams for help from the patients inside the facility. I have personally witnessed the elopement of patients from their caregivers while outside and the chase that has ensued by the employees to try and regain control of the patient, all the while listening to the patient yelling and trying to get away from the staff. It's very disconcerting to watch that. Now, granted, it hasn't happened lately because as Ben has said, most of his patients are all bound to the house, but it has in fact happened, not once, not twice, on multiple occasions over the three and a half years that he has been there. Another noteworthy fact has become a, that has become apparent is the increased traffic into and out of the business by medical personnel, patients and their families, employees, and support personnel. It has created a parking issue as the current facility does not have the necessary parking capacity to support the number of individuals assessing the facility on a daily basis. It has also increased traffic that's not typically witnessed on a recurring basis in a residential area. For example, according to the information that was provided to me by Livonia Fire and Rescue, they have been dispatched to the, to the facility thirty-four times for emergency care. Let's let that number sink in for a minute. Thirty-four times the neighborhood has endured an emergency response due to the condition of the patients next door. That number does not include the number of times patients have been transported to and from the facility by a private ambulance company. I hesitate to think what the impact of this proposal would do to these reported numbers and the overall atmosphere of this neighborhood if the resident population was increased to sixteen versus the current six. The facility next door does operate as a commercial business. We've been subjected to a myriad of problems associated with twenty-four-hour care and rotating employee shifts. Specifically, there has been a shift change over this past winter that occurred around midnight. I know this because multiple times a week, my family and I would be awakened by the loud thumping bass of a car radio while someone waited in the driveway to pick up an employee at that time. You can only imagine how disruptive that has been. In addition to the aforementioned situation, the facility has also brought an element of crime to our area. I have three reports from the Livonia Police Department that outline three separate instances where the police department was dispatched to that facility. One report outlines assault and battery at the location. An employee from the facility phoned the police department at two-twenty a.m. stating that multiple subjects were trying to enter the facility and he was hiding in the bathroom. During the emergency call, he said that a suspect had gained entry into the home and he disconnected the call. When the police arrived, they were unable to locate the subjects. The employee called again at four a.m. to say that his car windows had been smashed and that he would like some police support. All of that happening while my family was sleeping less than a hundred feet away. Another documented report outlines an incident where the police report reads, "Psych patient out of control, fighting with staff and throwing things." The third report outlines a hospice death and the removal of the body to a funeral home. I have copies of all of those reports, should you like a copy for your reference. As you can imagine, this type of activity has been increasingly difficult to tolerate. Home for Mom and Dad, while it is a wonderful service, is in fact a commercial facility that would be best served in an existing dedicated commercial zone due to the advanced needs of its patients and the type of services required to offer adequate care. It does not fit into a single-family residential model currently in place in this area. When I purchased my home and invested thousands of dollars to improve it, I never once imagined that the existing home next door would be turned into a ten-bedroom commercial facility. I purchased my property for its neighborhood qualities and its ambience, which has now been compromised by the activity that has become the norm for this business next door. There is absolutely no benefit to the current neighborhood in granting this request, but rather, a long list of detriments that seek to lower our property values and our quality of life. I am asking you to uphold Livonia's motto and put families first. I am asking you to vote no on this business proposal and put the families of Bainbridge first. Thank you for the opportunity to express my views and to address your, this panel.
Thank you very much, Ms. Federanco.[1786.16]
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, my name is John Ware. I live at one five one two seven Bainbridge. I've been there for over forty years, and I am a senior citizen. I believe that all the homes on this street should be single-family homes. We do not want a commercial business in the center, in the center of our neighborhood. The road is too narrow, as it's been mentioned before. If you park two cars, side by, one on one side and one on one side, the other side of that street, okay? Which sometimes that happens, people have parties in the summertime. This happens. I would say that everybody that lives on that street right now, nobody parks their cars on that street overnight. They're all parked in their driveways, their yards, wherever. Uh, people have parties in the summer, which is, you know, fine. And there will be double rows of cars. You can barely get between those cars with a car. You wouldn't get between one with an ambulance or a fire truck. Trust me, you wouldn't. Giving a commercial license to somebody in the middle of a, a residential neighborhood is just the wrong thing to do. Uh, in order to have parking, which has been mentioned, he would have to pave his entire front yard. Not just expand the driveway a little bit for a couple more spots. On weekends, if he has sixteen people living in that home, okay? On weekends, he could have twelve to sixteen visitors on a Saturday or a Sunday, easily. Where are they gonna park? Plus, he's gonna have to have, uh, nursing staff. What's he gonna do for food service? Cooks, laundry, cleaning staff, uh, visitors. You could have twenty-five to thirty cars try to park in that area on a Saturday or a Sunday. He's gonna have food, what's he gonna do for food service trucks? Is somebody gonna go over to Kroger's and do all the shopping for all those people? Or are they gonna have somebody like Gordon Foods come by with their semi trucks and deliver food? And I can guarantee you, if Gordon Food Trucks are driving down that road when the frost laws are on, and I'm sure most of you knows what the frost laws are, I will call the state, I'll call the city, because there, none of those trucks should be on that road when the frost laws are on. The only trucks that should be on that road are garbage trucks, and we can't, we will never stop that. We've got too many truck, too much truck traffic up and down that road as it is. Even when the frost laws are on. And it's gonna destroy our road again. That road is a nice road right now, compared to Merriman, I can tell you that. Anybody that's driven down Merriman, it's pothole city. Uh, I don't know if the county ever intends to do anything about that. Uh, I, I know that everybody that lives south of, uh, Linden, uh, uses our street as a cut-through street. And I can't say as I blame 'em, uh, and I can't say as we really like that, living on that street. And the speed limit is twenty-five, but I, not too many people know that. They think it's about, you know, fifty or sixty sometimes. As far as, he says, people looking at the wildlife out the back of their truck. I mean, out the back, excuse me. Out the back windows of his house. Yes, there's a lot of wildlife. We have deer. Abundance, abundance of deer in that area running around. But, these people with Alzheimer's disease, at that age, I know, because I had a father-in-law that had it. He got to the point, like this gentleman talked about, this is a good thing what this gentleman's thinking of doing, but not in this neighborhood. I know what Alzheimer's is. My father-in-law got to the point where he did not know me, he didn't know his wife, and this is what happens over that. They don't know where they are, they don't know what they're doing. And he is right about screaming and hollering, because I've heard that time and time again. Because I used to go visit him in a home. And, uh, it's not nice, it's not pretty. Once you give somebody a foot in the door to have a business in a setting like this, what's gonna come next? That's another thing. It's called the foot in the door, and we all know what that is. You're gonna let, a, a real estate company buys houses, we'll have real estate, uh, on our street. Clinic, uh, maybe another assisted living house, because you gave him a business there on our street. We'll have more assisted living houses. Funeral home, I hate to bring that up, but, uh, there's a lot of funeral homes that were put into houses as a setting. Uh, what he's doing is, I can see, it's a good thing. It's just the wrong neighborhood for what he wants to do. I could go on and on and on, but, uh, I'm dead set against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Roger Byrne, one four nine one zero Bainbridge, two houses north of this house. Let's talk about the logistics. He wants ten bedrooms. He's asking for sixteen people. Just a matter of time before it goes to twenty people. And then you have three people for, I mean, for every thirty people, you have one staff. They have ten parking places in front? They can't accommodate enough parking. They park as it is now when people visit on the street. You can't get down the street. Most of the people walk, their dogs down the street, the kids. They don't play on the street anymore because there's a lot of traffic. But the long and the short of it is, it's a high-traffic zone, and it's a problem. Let's talk about the trucks that deliver. The trucks deliver stuff now. They back in, they hold up the driveway, sometimes they park right in the middle of the road, offload on the deck, and wheel it into the garage, which is now gonna become two bedrooms. So the long and the short of it is, this is not the place. It is not the place it was a residential. Some years ago, about ten years ago, you were talking about putting condos, and they were trying to buy the back pocket, part of the property. At that point, the zoning commission and the city turned it down because they didn't wanna ruin the neighborhood. You do this, you're gonna ruin the neighborhood again. That's what I have to say. So I'm dead to the setting against it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Denise Byrne. I live at one four nine one zero Bainbridge, two houses north. I am very opposed to this. We have so much traffic going on our street as it, as it is. You allow this to happen, we're gonna have a huge parking lot. People coming and going. I have been woken up countless times in the middle of the night by people, you know, shift change, stereos blaring, car alarms. It's, I think he's doing a great thing, and we haven't said anything about what he's got there now. But if he expands, our whole neighborhood is gonna be ruined. I don't personally want to have to look at a big old parking lot in the front yard every day that I walk out of my house. So I am asking you to please not let this pass. And I'm also asking you, how would you like this next to you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
My name is Leo De Lafriggere. I live at fourteen six eight one Breeden Court. I got a notice from the city, that's why I'm here. Um, I'm in the RUF area, and I'm close enough to gotten city notice. I think Bainbridge is not the place for a facility this large. The street can't handle it. Open ditches, no street lights, no sidewalk. The snow removal in the winter, it's one of the last streets to be done. It's not a major throughfare. So, what happens when the, uh, fire truck or EMS, or they'll end up in a ditch? Right now, it's, uh, kinda controlled nuisance. But to expand it and change the zoning is totally irresponsible. I'm against it. My wife is against it. A lot of people are. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me.
We can.
I'm not as loud as I used to be when I had kids.
That's why we have the microphones.
Uh, my name's Patricia Golick, and I live at three zero nine two zero Linden Street, which, uh, as someone else said, no one knows that it's only twenty-five miles an hour, and sometimes I sit there quite a while before I can even back out of my driveway, and I sure wouldn't wanna see more traffic. But like Mr. Bongero, I hope I didn't massacre your name. I had a father with severe dementia. And the more his mind decreased, his ability to escape increased. And eventually, had to be in a home where it was secure, windows, doors, everything. My father wasn't a real social man, so what he really valued was his dignity and his privacy. And in the home he was in, he had his own bedroom, a sitting area, his own bathroom, which I don't recall how many bathrooms was planned for this house. But, they're not all in diapers, so they need the facilities. The parking was mentioned. I mean, with my dad, he had two sisters that still drove. I have four siblings. We sometimes were there, all at the same time. And ten spaces, you'd need at least three times that. The facility also had a huge dining room where they could sit at a table by themselves, or they could sit with other people. They had their own kitchen. It was open with snacks besides the meals, where they could get something to eat. And the backyard, yeah, uh, someone did mention the deer. They scare a lot of people. I was out one time just watching the stars, and I turned out my outside lights, and I was joined by twenty of them. So, there's a big population here. And I just think, like, I know the need for this kinda care, but it belongs in the proper facility and not in a single-family house neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Golick. Good evening, sir.
Hi, uh, my name's Thomas Dudak. I live at fourteen six one six Bainbridge. I'm retired for the last thirteen years, so I'm home all day long. I walk my dog Max up and down the street. Several things that I noticed, like, for the garbage, there's more than four cans. There might be four cans, but there's probably about ten bags, and it gets broken into by the raccoons. There's surgical gloves, all up and down the street from the animals. And one time when we were walking, I found needles. Another time, uh, one other thing I wanna mention, like someone else said, now, if you increase this, this big, in this location, I'm, I would imagine that you probably have to have commercial dump, uh, garbage pickup. That means a dumpster. Trucks coming, going, and getting it. Food services, again. Right now, I, you know, the guy, you're doing a great job, you are. But in the middle of our street, no. You know, there's other locations, and is, is this the only business that he is running? Is on Bainbridge, or is he own other facilities too?
Uh, we, we don't know the answer to that right now.
Oh, okay. And, you know, and if he were to run around to the neighbors and says, hey, this is what I'm thinking about doing, you know, I've been there since eighty-nine, and, uh, you know, he said he bought in a few years back. I don't know the guy. I never see him. You don't live there, but I do. So, I'm against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dudak.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Brenda Johnson. I'm at one four nine zero five Bainbridge. And as I'm looking at my notes, I don't wanna be redundant and repeat everything that everybody just said. Uh, I do wanna mention, um, the safety and the welfare of everybody on that street. The infrastructure for, as everyone stated before, the infrastructure for that street is not for commercial. There are ditches, there's no sidewalks. So when I walk with a stroller down the street already, twice I had to go off to the side with my grandchild because I had fire and rescue coming down the street. Now, however many, uh, times that it happened, you, you know you're gonna have to at least double that. All hours of the day and night. I've been on that street for thirty-five years. I understand exactly what he's doing. It's, it's an honorable thing to do, but bottom line, the only thing that that's gonna benefit is the person, the landowner, that wants to change our street into something other than what it really is, and not a residential, it would be commercial. And, and that, that would set a precedent, as one of my other neighbors said. It's gonna set a precedent. You have this gentleman doing it at this house, and who's to say that two neighbors down isn't gonna, they're not gonna wanna do the same thing? Or I may wanna do the same thing. And then, you know, who, you can't set that precedent on, on a residential street like that. You just can't. And my understanding, as Mr. Dudak before me had said, uh, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but my understanding is that he has at least two other facilities that he runs as home, one in Canton and one in Northville, that he could possibly expand that into. But maybe because it isn't a residential, those cities won't let them do it either. So at this point, I just want to, uh, voice my opposition to what this plan will be, and, uh, thank you for your time.
We appreciate you coming, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name's Matt Mance. I live at one five oh two seven Bainbridge. Just pretty much wanna echo everything my neighbors have said. It's just not a, a good place to have this facility. I am a FedEx driver. I do deliver to some of these facilities on my route. They get an enormous amount of diapers, the adult diapers, and these things are, these boxes are quite large. Garbage, I mean, trash day, all them diapers gotta go somewhere, you know? And it's just gonna, and tripling the amount is just gonna make a real mess, you know? And one thing, uh, one of my neighbors did say to me, uh, mentioned is, uh, what happens when this guy folds up this business? Who's gonna wanna buy that property? What are they gonna do with that property? You know, it's just really not feasible. Anyhow, that's all I had to say. I'm definitely against it. My wife's against it, so, thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming.
Sure.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mary Dudak. I reside at fourteen six one six Bainbridge Street. Um, I have a letter from a neighbor on Linden, who was totally opposed to this. I'd like to present this. You may read it at your pleasure.
You can hand it to Mrs. Reese, and thank you.
I have two letters from two neighbors on Flamingo Street, who are totally opposed to this for several reasons, could not attend because they are on vacation.
Thank you. We'll get those added to the record.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thirty years we've lived on this street, thirty years. We've raised our children, we dated on this street, we've raised a family. We've watched families come to this street for one reason and one reason only. It is a residential street. My neighbors are close, we take care of each other, we watch over each other. Most of you people in this audience will also know this street as the Kroger Street. We call it the Kroger Street because we have an abundance of traffic. If you call the Livonia Police Department, I reported traffic last night. I had two drag racers down my street. You can't make this up, and I'm quite sure any of you that live in Livonia, that are near my street, I'm not offended, you know it's the Kroger Street, you know exactly where it is. Now you want to bring in a residence with sixteen individuals that need state supervision. They need care. You cannot tell me that you want to give them a nice environment, and yet you're not gonna take them outside and see the environment? You stated that yourself, sir. I do not want this on my street. I have enough to deal with on our street. The Livonia Police are tired of hearing from us. But there's nothing they can do, and we get that. But we've all vested a lot of money into our property, for the simple reason is, it is a beautiful residential street. This is a commercial building, sir, that you want to build. If you feel having that is such an important thing, I urge this gentleman to please, and I will help him find a realtor, put his property up for sale. He will make a very good investment dollar on that property for a family such as any of these here that would like to move in. And I'll help you find a commercial building in the city of Livonia to house those wonderful people you wish to take care of. And by the way, my mother died from Alzheimer's, so I do know what those people go through and their families. That is all I have to say. I appreciate all your time this evening, on behalf of myself and our neighbors, and I hope to God you vote this down.
Thank you, Mrs. Dudak. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Jones. I'm from fourteen seven thirty-four Bainbridge. Um, I live a few doors down from that facility, and, um... I live a few doors down from that facility and, um, I can tell you right now that the neighbors that live on either side of that facility will probably take a loss if they want to sell the property because nobody's going to want to live next door to what is right there right now. So it's like their quality of life is destroyed. The rest of the block also because of the traffic. I don't think he knows how to handle biohazards because there's no excuse for any facility, facility, facility like that to have needles or diapers or anything litter our street, you know, on garbage day. So, you know, he's already, you know, um, it's just sad state of affairs for us. But if he were to expand, we have a dumpster on our block, how, not only that, the traffic already is bad, whatever he says, he can put in a little parking lot, but our street will be his parking lot for his commercial business and it's not fair to us. So he gets money and we have to put up with his traffic and his cars. So it's like, it's not, he can do whatever he wants. All the love he can put in, into a building doesn't have to be on our residential little, you know, one-person family homes. It doesn't have to be there to have love for these people. That's not the solution. Those people need love and care, but they don't need, you know, to be, you know, inside of, you know, we're next, you know, in the middle of two families where they're going to have to be exposed all night to, you know, traffic and, um, and ambulances and crying and screaming, you know? And to raise your kids like that, it's just, you know, or a family, or you can't even enjoy your own backyard. It's just sad, you know? So, you know, it's good work, but not the right place. So, you know, but we, we need to, he needs to learn about biohazards. Just saying.
All right.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Greg Miller, fourteen nine five one Bainbridge Street. I moved my family to Bainbridge Street because it's like rural urban farmstead. It's like country living in the city. It's like all the convenience of everything you need near you, but it's like living up north. And, yeah, there's, there's, uh, you know, drainage ditches on the side and like my neighbors are saying, the road is very thin, you can barely get two cars across it, but, uh, I don't think this is the right place for it. It's, it should be, it should be maintained in the same zoning ordinance that it's in now. Um, I don't think it should be changed because then it opens up to, to bringing in other businesses and things like that into the neighborhood. So my family is against it.
Thank you very much for coming. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Moore. I live at one four six four zero Breeden Court around the, around the block. I would like to acknowledge that it is certainly noble, this man is caring for the elderly. I sincerely hope to be one one day and I hope that if I get there, there will be a safe and happy place for me to live and I want that for all the elderly in our society. That being said, um, we need to consider the worst-case scenario because once this is approved, we have no say in how the structure is altered or used. Visually, it would, it would detract from the rural feel of the surroundings. Practically, we need to consider what future owners, should there be any, would do with this altered structure. The Small Business Association reports that thirty percent of new businesses fail within the first two years of being open, fifty percent within five years and sixty-six percent within the first ten. We're looking at two-thirds chance that this is not going to be this group home within the next ten years. I don't know what another company would do with it once it's made commercial like this. The proposed changes to the property may make it undesirable for future builders, um, future buyers, resulting in vacant property and/or a decrease in property values for the surrounding homes. Construction would create a hardship for the residents of the narrow sidewalkless street and we have no idea how long construction would take. The traffic impedance, noise and smell of construction vehicles are not desirable. A commercial structure and parking lot would detract from the bucolic atmosphere of Bainbridge, altering the essential character of the neighborhood. Bainbridge is a street down which folks drive with care to safeguard the children and wildlife that call it home. Visitors and employees wouldn't have the same familiarity with and attachment to the neighborhood to make those considerations. We live on Breeden Court, the next street over, and frequently use Bainbridge to ride our bikes or walk to Books Connection, Mary Bowl and Miami Bakery, among others. If we do drive Bainbridge, we're watchful for the pair of ducks that call it home in the drainage ditch on the northern end. This is an area where folks know their neighbors. A commercial property brings within an influx of strangers that can put our kids, wildlife and property at risk. With regard to traffic, increased residents means an increase in vehicles, whether it's resident-owned, visiting family, friends or physicians, delivery vehicles, staff for higher transport like Uber or Lyft who are incentivized to travel quickly, the community shuttle, or as previously acknowledged, emergency vehicles. That many additional cars driving down and parking on Bainbridge with drivers who aren't familiar with the neighborhood increases the risk of an incident. Living on Breeden Court, I predict an increase in frustrated drivers trying to circle the block to find a location or parking or to exit the neighborhood only to find it a dead end. Especially in winter when the roads are slick, people may find themselves in one of Bainbridge's drainage ditches if they're not familiar. As a young family, we'll be living with the changes made to this structure for decades to come as well as the potential for other similar structures being, um, to be built by setting this precedent. My husband and I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Linda Summers and I reside at one four six four seven Bainbridge, which is across the street from this house and down some. First of all, I have a letter from a neighbor across the street that could not be here tonight, and so I wanted to leave that.
Yes, we'll add that to our record. Thank you.
My mom has Alzheimer's. I realize the need for a home like Ben has. I really do. But my feelings are with the rest of my neighbors. This home does not belong in a residential area. Everything that I was going to say, they've already said, so I don't want to repeat it. But there's one thing, and maybe I'm out of line in my thinking, but I'm going to ask you anyway. Let's just say that this gets approved. Down the line, what would happen to the rest of us as far as, would they take our RUF zoning away from us? Could they do that? Because now we have a commercial business. Would our taxes be raised? Would it put us in a different zone other than RUF, which would mean now you have to have sidewalks because you're not RUF anymore? And who's going to pay for these sidewalks? Oh, the residents. So this has been heavy on my mind and it wasn't brought up yet, and so I'm bringing it up. It is a concern and I just thought that I would throw that out there because I think it's something to think of, what's going to happen to the residents as far as our RUF zoning.
That's a very fair question, Mrs. Summers. There is no proposal to change the zoning. Uh, it's simply a waiver use for this particular property for this type of use. So it wouldn't alter the zoning, but it is a fair question to ask. I think it's good that you're thinking of those types of things and, um, that's not to say that at some point in the future that the zoning could be proposed to be changed in that area, but it's not on the, it's not in the cards, it's not on the table and no one's proposing that, so.
But would it be changed? Is it more likely to be changed if this goes through?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I think honestly, what we typically do in these types of situations is, uh, because it is a waiver use, uh, we would, if this was to go forward with an approving recommendation, uh, typically what we do is we ask that, that waiver use be limited to this particular user so that even if he were to sell the business, it would require that he would have to, the, the future owner would have to come forward to the council and be re-approved for that use. So we, we try to do things to restrict, uh, as much as possible to the petitioner that we see before us because we can at least know what his intentions are, not necessarily future users. But needless to say, I, I don't think you're going to need to worry about the zoning changing.
All right. And thank you, all of you, for your time and your consideration and listening to myself and my neighbors.
Well, thank you for coming, Mrs. Summers. And we do want to appreciate, uh, everyone in the audience who's come forward to speak for being cordial and also, uh, doing a good job of, uh, expressing your views and your opinions. We do have another person who would like to come forward. You're more than welcome.
I'll make it short and sweet. Um, I'm Casey Sanderson and I live at fourteen eight seven five Bainbridge, which is right across the street. So I just moved to the neighborhood last fall, so I'm probably newer than a lot of people. So to be honest, I haven't noticed, um, a lot of the issues that were mentioned, um, but I will say in my house hunting process that, um, a lot of things about my property now, um, would change, um, as far as the attractiveness of, um, moving into the neighborhood. Um, so it is a rural zoning neighborhood. We have lots of wildlife, um, lots of peace and quiet. So, um, I just know that for the home values and people wanting to sell their properties or other people moving in, I think that it would affect it because I know I probably wouldn't have made the same choice that I did if there was a commercial, um, business right across the street. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Uh, Mr., Mr. Arsenal, uh, would you like to come forward, uh, just for a moment? As the petitioner, we always like to give you the last word. Uh, you heard a number of comments. If there's anything, we don't want to get into debate, obviously, but if there's anything that you want to address, you're more than welcome to.
Well, I know, some, some of what was said, uh, you know, I don't agree a hundred percent, you know, throwing the, I don't know, why would that be sharps? Sharps are, there's a special place for it, the sharps container here. Uh, I don't know exactly what they found and I wish, uh, someone would, would talk to me about it. They found one or two or three because, uh, really there's sharps containers in the house and maybe there's a careless staff that just threw it away and I need to know that. You know, I've been a psychiatric nurse in a managed hospital for, for the first fifteen years and I know exactly, you know, what to tell them, so I, I trained them personally in terms of, uh, the, I don't, I'm not aware also with the loud noise that comes and playing radios and all that, because most of the time there's only one car who works in the middle of the night. I mean, right now, on midnight when everybody's asleep, there's only one car there. So, I mean, having those noise and, I don't know where, where those things came from, but I don't know. I don't live there. So for all you know, it could be true.
Please, please, please.
I'm just, I'm just trying to be honest instead of, you know, making a statement that I, I don't think is a hundred percent correct. You know, I, I mean, we're, we're very quiet there. I mean, I like what the, the last person who said, she never observed any of those issues. And that's why I'm quite surprised that the whole neighborhood is here.
We've been doing this, at least I've been doing this long enough to know this happens.
They don't want this for the value of the properties and all that. I, I don't know because for the look of the building, no one, no one can really see the building because it's, it's going to be in the back and the issues of trash.
We live in the back.
Please, please don't, don't yell out, please.
So I, I got it. I mean, I, I do understand. I, I know exactly, you know? They're afraid that their, the, the values of their properties may go down, but I, I don't know if it will or not. Because I, I go to many different, uh, facilities, whether it's Oakland, million-dollar houses, and they have group homes right next to them and they have no issues about it. Oakland, I live in Oakland County.
Right.
So I see a lot of patients in Wayne County too.
Right.
And I can tell you, there's hundreds of those small group homes. Most people doesn't know.
Is there any, uh, questions from the commission for Mr. Arsenal? Okay, I don't see any. There is one person in the audience wishing to speak, so we'll give him a chance.
I'd just like to ask him a question.
Sir, we, sir, you'll need to come forward.
Okay, sir.
So our vast TV audience can hear you.
Okay.
And, and, uh, please, please ask the question of, of us.
Okay. I would like to know if the gentleman has this type of home in his neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Arsenal, if, if you wish to ask that question, answer that question, you're welcome to, you don't need to.
I'm new, I'm new to this neighborhood where I live.
Go to the microphone, please.
I'm new in this neighborhood where I live.
Okay.
I used to live in Canton in Rochester Hills. And yes, they have facilities like that in those neighborhoods. Actually, some of them are DD.
Mr. Arsenal, a question was asked earlier, um, as well, just, I, just to be able to answer that question. Uh, do you have any other facilities like this one? Do you own any or just this one?
No, this is the only one. Like I said, uh, from, from the very beginning, the only reason I thought about it is because of my mom.
Because you're.
When she's been to this, uh, many different facilities where she wasn't taken care of.
Right.
And so that's, that's why I thought about it and I always thought what's going to be good for them. I've done this for many, many years and I made recommendations and I've seen, uh, which one are very good group homes and which one are not. And so I've, I've seen them and all I'm trying to do is to create, uh, you know, a good environment for them. And that I thought about it, I don't, you know, in, in my opinion, because of course I'm biased, uh, that, you know, there's not really, you know, traffic is, I, I don't know, every time I go over there, there's only one or two cars, my staff.
Okay.
You know? So the crowd and all that, I don't know. And there's, uh, there's a lot of room there to create because the, the driveway, according to the plan that I submitted, it's going to be wider because the requirement is thirty foot wide and it's going to fit. It's just gonna, you know?
Right, we see that on our plan.
Yeah, yeah, you saw, you saw that one, yes.
Yes.
So, and, and to change the appearance of the neighborhood, it's not going to change because it's in the back.
We live in the back.
Is there any other? Again, well, you, you, everyone had their chance to speak, let's, let's, let's be nice to Mr. Arsenal too.
Okay.
Is there any other comments for Mr. Arsenal? Questions, comments? All right. Uh, again, you know, as chairman, I don't, I don't get to speak a whole heck of a lot, but I will say, Mr. Arsenal, that, uh, like many of the commissioners have said and many people in the audience, the work that you do is, is very noble, very admirable and, and I appreciate, uh, that as well, so thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, uh, I think we are ready to close the public hearing and look for a motion. So thank you, we'll have a seat and we'll see what the decision is. Uh, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. A motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McHugh.
I'd like to offer a denying resolution. That the request to operate an adult foster care facility for sixteen persons, excuse me, at one four eight six zero Bainbridge Avenue is hereby denied for the following reasons. That the petitioner has failed to affirmatively show that the proposed use complies with all of the special and general waiver use standards and requirements as set forth in sections eighteen point five eight and nineteen point zero six of the zoning ordinance number five four three. That the number of persons proposed, proposed for this adult foster care facility would adversely affect the peace and tranquility of the neighboring residential properties. That the proposed intensity of the use expanding from sixteen, from six to sixteen residents is inconsistent with the surrounding residential neighborhood. And that the proposed use is in contrary to the goals and objectives of the zoning ordinance, which, among other things, are intended to ensure suitability and appropriateness of uses.
All right, do we have support for the motion? All right, we have a motion to deny by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs., or excuse me, supported by Mr. Ventura. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wilshaw.
Votes aye. Motion has been denied. The petitioner will have ten days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We'll give just a moment for our lovely audience to, uh, walk out. Audience is still very well behaved, so I think we can move on to item number two.
Petition, two thousand nineteen dash zero six dash zero eight dash one zero submitted by CBL and Associates on behalf of Dunham Sports, requesting approval of all plans required by sections eighteen point four seven and eighteen point five eight of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number five four three as amended. Requesting a proposal to renovate the exterior of one of the units, one seven Requesting a proposal to renovate the exterior one of the units 17625 Six Mile Road of the Laurel Park Place Shopping Center located on the northwest corner of Six Mile and Newburg Roads and the north, in the southeast quarter of Section 7.
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary, your voice will always penetrate any, any crowd. We'll go to Mr. Toramina for background on this item.
Thank you, Laurel Park Place Shopping Center is located within one of the city's seven special area development control districts as set forth under Section 18.47 of the zoning ordinance, and what this does is it regulates any alterations to structures and requires that they first be reviewed by the planning commission and the, the city council. So Dunham Sports is the new tenant that will occupy a significant portion of the first floor of the space that was previously occupied by Carson's Department Store. The entire upper level of the former department store, as well as a portion of the first floor located on the north end, is not part of the leasehold and improvements, and I think we heard from the petitioner at the study meeting that they'll be occupying about 45,000 square feet of the lower level, which is, which is about 65,000 square feet altogether. The former Carson's was about 130,000 square feet in size. The part of the facade that Dunham's proposes to renovate faces Newburg Road and includes the store's main entrance on that side of the building. These changes would include painting the exterior columns that frame the main entrance, as well as installing a new sign. The area in question today is a lighter beige color, as you can see from this rendering, the new color scheme around the entrance would be dark brown, and this includes the metal framing around the doors, the windows, and the canopy. And then above the entrance, where the old Carson's sign was located, will be a new sign that identifies Dunham Sports. This sign would be an area of approximately 236 square feet. Corrugated metal panels would be used as the backing behind the, the sign, and then all the other brick and other exterior features, including the, the granite veneer, would not be altered as part of this petition. And Mr. Chairman, relative to correspondence, we have items from the engineering division, the Livonia Fire and Rescue, the traffic bureau of the police division, the inspection department, department of finance, office of the treasurer, as well as the assessors' office, all of which do not have any objections to this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina, any questions for our planning department? Seeing none, the petitioner is here. One of you would like to come forward? I'll let any representative speak. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Andy Wasserstrom, I reside at, or I'm at 5150 Walcut Court in Columbus, Ohio. We are the national signage provider for Dunham Sports and have done the majority of their sites in Michigan. I did pass out last week at the session some sheets, I did want to note that our calculations, I believe, that were just read off of 236 were incorrect. We were told that we could calculate this as each word being its own square footage, so Dunham's and Sports being its own, which would give us a total square footage of 227.75 square feet. I do have these in updated drawings, if you would like me to pass these out. I do have copies.
I don't think that's necessary. Mr. Toramina, is that the, correct on how square footage is calculated, or is it the dimension of the entire area?
Actually, I thought the way it was done the first time was accurate, but that's usually a decision, or a review that's done by our inspection department. How the exact calculation is determined, I, I'm, I'm not sure. It shows the 236, and it separates each word separately, I thought, so.
Okay, I just checked the math this morning, and for, I don't know why it was off, so, but I have copies. So tonight, we're, we're asking to have a variance granted here for the sign on the storefront, the previous retailer. Carson's had three signs, three different elevations. We have a hardship with about 420 feet setback from the storefront to Newburg Road, you're all familiar with the berm that's there as well, and then diagonally, there's about a 515-foot setback to the corner of Newburg and Mount Laurel, or North Laurel Park Drive. The previous sign that was there was the Carson's sign that was measured at 7 feet by 32 feet, and then before that, we have the Parisian sign that was 6 feet by 38 feet, which would measure 228 square feet, so we're asking for a little less than, than the Parisian sign that is up there. I believe we shared some examples, too, of the different storefronts indicative of a brand with the last call, so I don't know if there's anything we need to discuss, or if there's any questions on that, we'll be happy to answer.
Well, let's see if we have any questions for you, Mr. Wasserstrom. Any questions for the petitioner's representatives? I see none. Mr. Kara Magna?
Tell us a little bit about the lighting, so we understand the lighting and the times it's gonna be lit.
Sure, so it's internally illuminated, as you would typically see an internally illuminated channel letter, so it will be face illuminated. I think that the retailers, if I recall, that have that similar type of construction would be like the Eddie Bauer store. I don't know that it would be very different from the Carson's. The Carson's sign, I can't tell from, from the pictures we took, and when we looked at it, it was either backlit or facelit with a perforated vinyl, so it was, it was white at night, but it would be very indicative to the retailers that are already there in the mall.
Do you think you get your best visual against that corrugated background? It just doesn't stand out like I, I realize it's Dunham's corporate deal, but it just doesn't seem to stand out strong, as if you had it against a solid back.
Yeah, we, we do, I mean, that gets the most presence, having a lighter background with the red. Red is the most visible color sign that there is, so that is why we choose a red, a red color, and the silver backing is quite visible.
Maybe, maybe the picture here doesn't do it as much justice as it does in real life.
I, I think if, if there are some nighttime views, perhaps maybe that would have helped, but, yeah, it's very, that, at nighttime, obviously, that goes away.
Okay, thank you.
And I think someone on the board had asked last week if it was a mirror almost, because of the sun shining on it in some of these photos, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kara Magna, any other questions for the petitioner? I don't see any, I don't see anybody left in the audience to speak for or against this item. Is there anything else that you would like to tell us before we make our decision?
Yeah.
Yes, hello, good evening.
My name is Michael Lee, I'm the architect for CBL, which is the mall. My address, 1652 Timber Hollow Drive, and I'm Wildwood, Missouri.
Thank you.
During the work session, you had asked for a floor plan, and we had submitted that, so if you have any questions on that, I can answer, or the exterior, I can try to answer those questions as well.
I don't think that made it into our electronic packet, Mr. Toramina. Oh, no, it did, it did, I do have that, so if there's any questions about that, feel free to ask. Mrs. Smiley.
You're talking about the interior of the building. My question was, you're gonna put a wall up between, which would have been after the escalators and elevators and the sunlight, or the lighting in there?
Correct.
There's gonna be a wall that goes all the way to the ceiling, which will pretty much eliminate all natural light from there back, is that correct?
The north entrance still has all the glass provided for that in, entry, so we're only using the east entrance, and we're taking all the skylight for the Dunham space.
So there, but there would be no windows, or, well, I guess the entranceway and around the entranceway, you would have light?
Correct.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the rest of the building. Is somebody from Laurel Park here that wants it?
I'm with CBL.
Yeah, could, could I ask you that, then, what you think you're gonna do with that building, or that part of it?
Jeff Allen with CBL.
Okay.
We don't know at the time.
Okay.
At this time, leasing is pursuing, continuing to pursue different uses.
But it would go, it's kinda two-story then, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
But it would be virtual, virtually no light except for the entranceway?
Correct, unless we put, find a, a tenant that wants to put a window system in, or curtain wall system in, or storefront.
Okay, and is there some way they could get to the second floor?
Yes, there is that opportunity.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley, any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any. Anything else you'd like to add? You're all set? All right, good, thank you, we'll look for a motion then.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution, that the request to renovate the exterior portion of Laurel Police Park at 17625 Six Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions: Number one, that the modifications as depicted on the exterior elevation plan prepared by CASCO Plus R5 is received by the planning commission on June 21, 2019, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number three, that the specific plan referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for, and number four pursuant to Section 19.10 of Ordinance Number 543. The zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Kara Magna, to approve, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Kara Magna votes aye. Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Chairman Rochelle.
Votes aye, motion passes, we'll go on to city council with an approving recommendation, and we wish you luck with your project.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome from Columbus, I'm not surprised you spread.
Well, I just have socks for everyone tonight.
Oh, boy.
Very nice.
Always best to reveal things like that after the vote, right?
Smart to wait after the vote. Very good, and we'll go on to item number three on our agenda.
And that is petition 2018-05-02-11 submitted by CESO Inc., requesting a one-year extension of all plans in connection with a proposal to renovate the existing Speedway gas station, including demolition of the existing building, construction of a new gas station, and the operation of a limited-service restaurant, Speedy Cafe, at 37416 Seven Mile Road, located on the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Newburg Roads, in the southeast quarter of Section Number 6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Toramina?
Again, this is just a request to extend the site plan and the waiver use for the renovation of the Speedway gas station on Seven Mile and Newburg Roads. This is an item that was approved just a little over a year ago. The petitioner is here to indicate that, that they were unable to commence the construction this year, so they're seeking the, the one-year extension with plans to, to get underway in April of 2020.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toramina, and I believe there are a few letters that we received, of correspondence, all in support of...
Yeah, and I think some of those repeat the reports that were provided on this item back in, in 2018.
I see, very good, thank you. Is there any questions for the planning department? Hearing none, the petitioner is here. If you would like to come forward and add anything you can, it's fairly simple request. Good evening, welcome back.
Thanks a lot, Mandy Goss, CESO, 13060 Old US 27, Dwyer, Michigan. Thanks for having me back, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Again, we're requesting an extension, unfortunately, it wasn't in the budget to start this year. We do have our Wayne County approvals, which are good through May of next year, so we will get started before that expires, because you all know how hard Wayne County can be. So, the goal is to start in spring of next year, so.
I think that's probably the obvious question we were gonna ask you, is there any other questions for our petitioner here? Mr. Bonjero?
Hi, are you gonna, how are you gonna, you gonna maintain being open the whole time during...
Oh, yeah, they won't close the station until they're ready to start construction, they don't wanna lose any, obviously, revenue. So what they'll do is, before they close down, typically, they have a 30-day warning where they start kind of clearing out just the products and let everybody know, because they do have to completely shut down the station to demolish everything and reconstruct. The entire process typically takes around four months, is all, for reconstruction. So they will close the station, but they will give ample notice to the people who stop regularly, just so they are aware of the day that it will be shut, and they move quick, because the longer they're shut down, the less they make.
It's busy in there.
Yeah.
That's all I...
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero, any other questions for our petitioner?
Close coffee.
No other questions for our petitioner? If not, a motion is in order.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make an approving resolution that the request for a one-year extension of the plans approved in connection with the proposal to redevelop the site of the Speedway gas station, including the operation of a limited-service restaurant, Speedy Cafe, at 37416 Seven Mile Road, subject to city council approval and the following conditions: That the request for a one-year extension of waiver use approval by CESO Inc. on behalf of Speedway in a letter dated June 14 of 2019 is hereby approved and shall, and that all conditions imposed by council resolutions number 25418 and 255-18 in connection with the petition 2018-05-0211, which permitted the redevelopment of the existing Speedway gas station site at 37416 Seven Mile Road, shall remain in effect to the extent that they are not in conflict with the foregoing condition.
Is there support?
Support.
Who do we have on that one? Mr. Bonjero, okay, thank you. And I will note that I didn't skip, or I did skip audience communication, because there is no one in the audience, so, just wanna make a note of that for our TV audience. We have an approving resolution by Mrs. Smiley and support by Mr. Bonjero, if there's no discussion, secretary can call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Kara Magna, aye. Chairman Rochelle.
Votes aye, motion passes, and good luck with your extension.
Thanks.
Hope that goes well. That takes us to the pending items section of our agenda, item number four.
Approval of the minutes of the 1,145th public hearings and regular meeting held by the planning commission on July 9, 2019.
And I believe everyone was present for that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by...
Support.
I heard Mrs. McHugh on that one. If there's no discussion, we have, again, motion by Mr. Long and Mrs. McHugh, if there's no discussion, I think we can safely show seven to approve our minutes, and we will have those approved, and that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission? Hearing none, if there is a motion to adjourn, I would like to hear that.
So moved.
From Mr. Ventura, and we have support by Mrs. Smiley. Again, if there's no discussion or objection, I think we can safely show seven to adjourn the meeting tonight, and that will end our meeting this evening. I'd like to thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution, and we will adjourn this meeting at 8:48 PM. Good night, Livonia.